Good evening and welcome. Wonderful to see everybody here tonight. Would you please stand and join me in the pleasurable evening? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great and just as a whole. Well, it's a privilege to have everybody here in the spotlight, our student athletes, and thank their parents for the support. But first, we need to go through a little bit of this as we complete our roll call.
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we saw the Board of Education approve the agenda for December 4th, 2023 Regular Board of Education meeting. Andrew, Luke, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. And now, for the important part of the meeting, the Board Spotlight. Mr. DeBarby.
Thank you.
Dr. DeBarby.
So we're very excited this evening to recognize students and staff as we typically do our Board of Education Spotlight. We're going to start this evening with recognizing our 2023 Holiday Reading Card Contest participants. So as many of you know, there was a Facebook campaign we put out where we're soliciting students across the district to submit an entry for our Holiday Reading Card. And we have a variety of students that we're recognizing as finalists today and also our winner. And then we're going to start first by recognizing our McNamara 5th Grade Student, Elizabeth. Elizabeth, are you ready? Come on up now. We have a winner who is obviously just going to come out of your seat. If you're making this right here. Next, we have third grader from Palmer, Ava. And then I think, fourth grader, Nolan, coming up. We have a third grade reader, Jack, you're witness. Second grader from the Mandarin, Tyler Murphy. Third grader from Palmer, Maya Cheats. Third grader from Palmer, Katie Schultz. Fifth grader from McNamara, Allison Simpson. And second grader from McNamara, Everest Simpson. So all of these students did a wonderful job as finalists. Certainly, they're much more talented than that when it comes to creating holiday cards. A really good job again. But we're excited this evening to recognize our winner, fifth grader of McNamara, Dorothy. And I will say that just before the holiday parade here at the end of the month, we will distribute electronic cards to our school community. So congratulations, all of you, for doing a hard job. We're here.
Parents, if you want to take a picture, please read it. Feel free to come out and take a picture, please, parents. Jack, why are you coming back?
All right, guys. Everyone hold up their certificates so I can see them. Perfect. Excellent. I'll move away from parents.
Have a wonderful round of applause for your happy new year and safe travels. So we're going to transition now to some of our older students here at the district. So we're excited first to recognize our Boys varsity soccer teams. So we're going to ask Chris and Katie from the lineup, along with coaches. In the evening, Katie, who look awesome, are you here?
They're coming.
So as many of you know, our Boys varsity soccer team won its Section 3 Class AAA Championship, the First Class AAA Championship in New York State. And they also moved on to win the regional championship game and competed in the state championship. Fortunately, fell just a little short, I will say. And I know a couple of board members intended to go to the regional game, the finals game, with Ian. And certainly, it was an exciting game. We're certainly very proud of all of the work and effort over the course of the season. From the saves, we were down at the regional game, they didn't win this. And to, this is your concept over there. The nonstop saves, the rest of the people going forward and pulling through with outstanding goals. And it was just an exciting run. So we can't thank you enough for the excitement that you created here as a district. So we're going to turn it over to Chris and Emily Lynn as he's going to read through the names of all of the boys soccer players. And you will read your certificate.
The following players please come up. Cameron Abraham, Joshua Armoreprester, Adrian DeMater, Sawyer Bar, Ryan Morris, Owen Murk, Thomas Cantillo, Lucas Corbett, Owen Daly. And then also, Nathan Georgia, Ethan Har, Jack Digman, Nicholas Collins, Andrew Young, Hugh Lecasek-Lowant, Joe McCallan, Ian Price, Declan Lynn-Reymore, Gregory Reagan, Michael Sacco, Nicholas Sacco, Adrian Savage, Alex Smith, Patrick Smith, William Stevens, Marcelo Vona, and Tyler Williams.
We're going to scrunch in, guys. We need to scrunch in. Just 11 more. We'll be deciding scrunching. Chris, please step in post. Okay, everyone hold up certificates. Make sure they're right way. Thank you.
Good job, boys.
Next, we're going to recognize members of our Girls' varsity tennis team. So both mainstream. So we're excited first to recognize Girls' varsity tennis players, Tanya Hazen and Lainey Desbit, who won the Section 3 Regional Championship for Doubles, competed in the New York State World Tennis Championships. Also, we're going to recognize Girls' varsity tennis player, Mary Hazen, who won the Section 3 Championship for Singles and competed in the New York State Girls' Tennis Championships. Last, but certainly not least, Girls' varsity tennis player, Ava Alvis, competed in the New York State World Tennis Championships in Singles. And then, congratulations.
Good job, Madson.
We're going to move on to our Girls' Hall of Fame Team. And Coach Sailor and Taylor, come on up. Are you here? So we're excited to recognize our Girls' varsity Hall of Fame Team, who won the Section 3 Class AAA Championship. And Mr. Green, please, who's going to go through the players?
The following players please come up. Avery Cavalero, Sophia Connors, Natalie Davenas, Avery Davenport, Allison Dixon, Addison Garcia, Madeline Ulich, Amelia Yahan, Anaya Johnson, Maya Luszinski, Nela Lawton, Mazza Nuteg, Audrey Morris, Mallory O'Freddie, Sadie Phelps, and Ayo Agwes.
Yeah, if we can kind of do more to align. Behind the red, I can't see. Could red... Do you guys swap? Perfect. Everyone look right here.
Again, congratulations. For Girls Swimming. Ava Smith won the Section 3 Championship in the 100-yard蝶跳 in the 50-yard freestyle. Ava also placed first in the state qualifier in both these events. She competed in the New York State World Swimming Championship. We also want to recognize Olivia Van Anis, who won the Section Championship in 100-yard butterfly. And the girls' service athlete, Noel Astaso, if you could come on up.
Can you turn your... turn the certificate around? Right here, six nine. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to the girls' volleyball. Co-coach Nolan and co-coach Sarah, are you here? Across the country. So we're going to recognize student members of the Boys' Girls' Cross Country Team who competed in the state cross-country meet, which was held on November 11th at the PS High School. So representing the Girls' Cross Country, Cameron Barton, plays Syria. The Boys' Cross Country, Noah Over, plays 45. And Rodney Wilson, who plays 76. So we're going to shift gears at this time to recognize two of our staff members. One, two, three. We're here first to recognize 2023 MACES Thanksgiving Day Parade Participants. Band Director, Teacher Casey Vanderstoe, and Randall Bennett. They've come up. So if you didn't know this already, they performed in the Marching Band Director's portion of the 2023 MACES Thanksgiving Day Parade, which is one of the longest and most iconic parades in the United States. Casey is the main director and teacher at the high school. And Randall is the instructor at the elementary level, both Palmer and Halliday, and also works as the marching band music coordinator. Casey played the serengeti drum, and Randall played the sousaphone, which is basically the marching tuba. In the parade, Randall and Casey marched with 413 other band directors from across the country. They did an amazing job representing our district on the national stage. And I know from the text messages that were sent back and forward to Casey during the event, brought back a lot of memories from a few years back when our students participated in the parade as well. So again, congratulations and thank you for representing our district well. So last recognition this evening is Science Teacher at the high school, Rebecca Humphrey, who has been selected to participate as the New York State Ambassador Teacher. So Rebecca was recognized last month as being a participant in that program. The New York State Ambassador Teacher Program has been fashioned on a network and won 17 hundred public school teachers with a passion for inspiring the next generation of educational leaders in the area of math, science, biology, et cetera. My guys, we've been here in this district since 2018. Congratulations. Again, we're not sure if people would like to say good words, but thank you so much to all our student athletes, parents, families, for sending us these positive messages. We get to work with them on our daily basis. We're certainly a big proud.
Again, congratulations, student athletes. We're very proud of you. And to the parents, thank you for your support. And the coaches, wonderful job. Continue to help these kids. And to our staff, we're very proud of you. So thank you for coming. We're so proud to have you as a part of the Biville community. And I hate to tell you that the business section is next, but you can go ahead and go tell them that if you would. You're always exciting with what you give back. But thank you so much. Great start to the meeting. Now we'll go through the correspondence, corrects, and reports. Are there any things, bodies, want to talk about? Any reports, anything else of policy to be made today? But anything else that could be pulled off?
Just with the policy term, we're going to read the 7,000 things. They will have recommendations for, at the January 4th, for some retirements, a couple of changes. And just going to fill them out with the year.
Just because we're on the correspondence, and I'm afraid again, if I'm just ensuring that I'm following protocol. Like I know, I just wonder if this was supposed to be a time to just read my resignation, or do we wait till the part? What would be most appropriate?
I think we'll give you the floor, not you.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Pursuant to Policy 1250, I regretfully tender my resignation as a Balden Village Central School District Board Member, effective at the conclusion of tonight's board meeting on December 4th, 2023, to devote more time to my family and pursue my doctorate. Serving on the board has been a rewarding experience, and I am grateful for the opportunity to contribute to the school's mission. Thank you to my family, mentors, thought partners, community and district for their unwavering support and encouragement. I celebrate the amazing leaders, educators, and support staff who serve our most precious resource, our student capital. Thank you to the exceptional Biville community of students, including my beloved daughter, who continues to widen my lens as a parent and as a human being. I celebrate you all, and I am so very proud of all you do to reach your fullest potential. Thank you.
Tanya, I know I speak for everybody when I say we appreciate your sacrifice. I know you've got a extremely busy schedule. So thank you for your service. Thank you for your time and your insights. Thank you.
If I could say in comments as well. For those of you that were not aware, Tanya was appointed to the board in December 21st of 2020, and she served until June 30th of 2021. She was then elected in May of 2022 and has served since July 1st of 2022 until the present time. Certainly, on behalf of the leadership team of the Board of Education, we certainly extend an appreciation to you as an outgoing Board of Education member. Your dedication and service to our board, our students, our staff, administrators is greatly appreciated. Many of you may know that Tanya is an advocate for all students. Her support of our district's team, our teachers, administrators, support staff members, have helped us shape our current district strategic plan. And certainly, her contributions to that are immense. Tanya spent many evenings away from her husband and her daughter, as she's mentioned. And certainly, based on her work moving forward, getting a doctorate is a task in itself. And certainly, wish you well in that endeavor. And we'll be proud when you're there, when you're defending. So please let us know. Thank you.
Board member, I'd like to speak. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I too would like to read my resignation for my position on the board. Pursuant to Policy 1240 of the Balden Village Central School District Board of Education, please accept this as my resignation as a member of the Board of Education at the close of the regular board meeting this evening. The two and a half years in which I have proudly served as a Board of Education member have been rewarding, yet challenging. I'm grateful for those in this community and district who have supported and encouraged me in this role. This thinking is a reflection of my personal experiences and opinions during my time served on this board. In May of '21, I campaigned to provide a greater level of transparency, ask critical questions, and ensure high-level accountability. I have upheld all of these to the best of my ability while working within my role and responsibility of a Board of Education member. I have learned a great deal about our district, the field of education, and the role of a board member. I am saddened that I will no longer be able to serve this community and district in this role. My integrity has been questioned by being a part of this board. The board's values no longer align with my ethical and core values. I have been scrutinized, dismissed, and silenced for asking questions that fall within the scope of my board responsibilities. I am hopeful within time I will be able to give back to the community and district in other meaningful ways. I strongly encourage this board, future boards, and our community to listen for understanding, ask the difficult questions, and most importantly, trust but verify. This is the most time-consuming and difficult part of this position, and this is where the real work comes in. I have, in my time as a volunteer on this board, endured isolating tactics in which I have been rebuked, dismissed, and disrespected, with a level of contempt to discredit my service to the board. My thoughts and concerns have been suppressed, and I am no longer able to fulfill my fiduciary responsibilities as a democratically voted member of this board. It has been implied that I am a liar. I have been chastised, publicly being called ridiculous, and taking up the board's valuable time. My contributions to the board have been disregarded, and statements have been made by board members that the questions I pose are badger questions. The intent of my questions are for clarification and understanding to continue to move our district forward academically for all students. I believe strongly and have advocated vocally that perceived inequality must exist, and many matters must be discussed, questioned, understood, and investigated.
and I know you'll certainly enjoy spending a little bit more time away from all of this with your husband and your two children. So, on behalf of the district, we thank you for everything and your contributions.
Thank you, Dr. Barberry.
I guess, are there any other, that was a lot of activities there, anything else to report on the board activities, or are we ready to move on to our new board report? I think, Mike, you have the floor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just, recently, two of your students presented in the Colorado Leadership and Leadership Education on behalf of the Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute, so, like Sophia Beck, and right now, because I'm really nervous, hold on, Sophia Beck, I got it, give me a moment, and Sydney.
Tonyato.
I'm sorry?
Tonyato.
No. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry for this, this, I'm just going to say this much. It was in the weekly letter, I just wanted to say, the two students who presented, and forgive me, and I'm seeing you Friday, forgive me, Sophia and Sydney. They presented their own personal accounts from their actual essays for college. They actually extracted some of their college essay and talked about the impact of the Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute. We were so, so pleased, and the board leadership was so pleased and so moved by the lords of these exceptional students. So, I just want to celebrate them. We have fifty-eight candidates, delegates, being trained from ten different districts across the region, and it's great to see the presentation in Balden'sville, so I just want to celebrate that.
And we will be recognizing those four students in a future board meeting similar to last year, so we'll certainly give them credit where credit is due.
I actually, I hope I listened to the four students. Well, the four students, yes, and there was the two that presented to the board. No, yes, please, please.
Yeah. I heard four. I go to the.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, go for it.
All right. The semi-final will happen on Saturday, so it was lots of fun, but the news under the northern lights, I believe. Many wore pajamas for a pageant pajama run. The total raised was seven thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and three cents from all eight buildings. The funds represented at Liverpool High School, Pageant's Barfly Incorporated, student representatives Ryan Lewis and Ken Brennan have presented them. It was attended by Dr. DeBarry, Mr. Denton, and Mr. Dune. It seems like students have more in the rhythm of the metal detectors. It's become a part of our schedule, and I think it was, it was rock of hers, but it was just a matter of going into the schedule and covering it to our minds. Then, once your sports are starting, I will keep the board posted with those students go on, going to try and check in with the athletic department to keep those updates regular. The rehearsal for the Matilda play has also started at Baker High School. The twenty twenty-four Angelo, I'm so sorry, I'm going to change this. Angelo, Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute, students were chosen. Kira Ann Remington, Sophia Beck, I'm so sorry, I'm trying to catch this, well, Kiari Roger Gess, and Isabella Clark, posters made by Alba's website from my here, it's an amazing program to be a part of. And for another thing, the thing here is, we're going to set up a small box, kind of as a trial, for how it works for me at Baker. We may do an online version as well to allow more voices, possibly to be heard. It's just something small, as long, along with the students being chosen district-wide to also, from all the grades and all the schools, to help me get more reports from other schools as well, so I can better inform the board on what is happening district-wide rather than what I hear, what I see on Alba's website, or just what's happening on Baker. And that was all.
Can I just correct myself? So, thank you, Sophia and Isabella, I owe you one, my apologies, because they presented for the board, so thank you for correcting me.
All right, thank you. So, the next agenda item is the public participation, and we certainly are happy to have public comments. I think we have several speakers, so we ask, in the interest of time, please, some comments in three minutes, and if you might, please specific individuals or positions, but we will respond in a letter, and board members are, won't engage, this is not a conversation, it's your right to express your opinions. If there, we are all here for students, and it's expected that everyone speaking tonight will follow rules and present the, and model behaviors that we expect from our students. So, with that, can we have some requests, I believe?
Correct. We actually have eight speakers this evening, James Behringer in regards to board procedures.
So, may I just interject, we just had, James Behringer and Tanaji Turner will not be speaking, they came here to support, so you can remove them from the list. They were just members of my family, they're the support. Tanaji Turner. Did you get any of them?
No, I still have it, sorry.
Okay. My sister, my apologies.
That's okay, I just, that's why I asked for clarification, so thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Josie Butler. And she's speaking in regards to VTAP for the student perspective.
My name is Josie Butler. I am a sophomore at Baker High School. This is my fifth year involved in the VTAP community. I have been in junior productions for four years, and this year, I was a student producer for Finding Mimo Junior. I am also an upcoming production of Matilda. I enjoy being involved in VTAP because it's a really good community, and I love bringing, I love the journey of bringing the show to life. We have such a great program. The directors, producers, and stage managers are helpful, supportive, and I've learned so much through my experience with them. I look forward to the upcoming shows in my future years with VTAP. I'm here today to give my perspective about the recent changes to our finances. As you know, in the past, we have been a self-funded program. We previously charged the mission for our shows, and that money was used to put into our account to help fund future shows. Some of the costs include costumes, set designs, et cetera. In the past, the students have had to help make the plans and budget our shows. Students have learned important skills through this opportunity. However, now that our budget is part of the school district budget, this has changed. Other ways this has impacted our program include the efficiency and flexibility of purchasing items for the show. Now, there are extra steps that need to be taken. For example, in previous years, if someone was painting a wall and ran out of paint, they could just use a CCA credit card and make the purchase right away to get the work done. Now, if someone needs to make a paint purchase, they need to go through many time-consuming steps. Also, in regards to purchasing items for the show, the set designers used to be able to help buy, usually able to buy things from antique shops, Facebook Marketplace, and other similar cheaper options. Now, with the changes, there are restrictions on where the items can be purchased, which would impact the cost. Another concern is that people will reserve tickets without fully committing to attending since tickets are free. My family saw this at the recent Mimo show, where there were open seats around them, yet the shows were sold out. I know people that wanted to get tickets but couldn't because it was sold out. Also, the arts are not free anywhere else. If you wanted to go see any performance, you would just have to pay for a ticket. If you wanted to see Aladdin at the landmark or a Christmas Carol at Serpentine Stage, you would have to pay for a ticket to see these high-quality productions. We also put on high-quality productions here at VTAP, but now, people can just go see them for free. Having these free tickets could cause someone to believe that the arts are free other places. If someone were to go to college and want to see a concert, they would have to pay for a ticket. Some students are pursuing theater education post-high school, and taking away the opportunity to work on budgeting impacts their ability to learn some of these important skills with high school productions. One idea to make things more equitable is to offer a pay-what-you-will show prior to the opening night, which is something I have been a part of with Volontile Theater Guild, and which would allow members of our community to attend for free or at a low cost. I think the district's heart is in the right place to make seeing these great shows affordable and available to everyone. However, I believe the ticket prices were affordable already, and the old system allowed us to have the independence and flexibility that comes with being self-funded, which created the best experience for everyone involved in these productions. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Nora DeVois in regards to no admission for extracurriculars. Good evening. At the last board meeting, I spoke about my concerns regarding the district's decision to offer free admission to extracurricular activities. My daughter performed in this sold-out VTAP production of Finding Mimo Junior. Historically, around ninety-five percent of tickets that are sold for a VTAP show are used. I would like to update you regarding the results of making tickets free. About eighty percent of the free tickets were used. They went from about five percent of tickets sold going unused to twenty percent. This means that one out of every five tickets reserved for free went unused. Any organization that made a significant operational change and subsequently experienced that drastic of a loss would be negligent if they did not take immediate steps to reverse that change. Tickets sold to patrons that go unused still generate revenue for the organization. Free tickets that go unused do not generate revenue and rob our student artists of the opportunity to perform before a full house. It is still my understanding that this decision to make extracurricular activities free comes from an attempt to meet the district's commitment to equity. More than a week before the show Mimo was sold out, all available tickets had been reserved. Those who were not quick enough in reserving their tickets were out of luck. For whom is that equitable? The mission of the school district is to foster an environment to educate and empower all students today to become global citizens of tomorrow. That mission should not include teaching students and the community that their work should be free. We live in a capitalist country embedded in a worldwide economy. We do our children and our community a great disservice to shield them from the reality that goods and services are produced and exchanged at a cost. The district has a special interest in financially supporting an opportunity for students to experience a live theater production as audience, cast, and crew members. When that support means no one pays for a ticket, you have robbed the students of another very important lesson in economics. People pay for what they value. When our community members buy a ticket to see a school production, they are taking part in acknowledging the value of that production. It is a denigration of the students' efforts when their sponsor gives it away for free. I believe that our district should avoid the adoption of hollow gestures, like making everything free, and instead, encourage real substantive efforts to educate and empower our students with real-world opportunities. This is an issue not just for our theater arts program, but for all of the programs, musical, artistic, and athletic, which have been impacted. Please consider an immediate change to rectify this situation. Thank you. Our next speaker is Vincent Kearney in regards to tax exemptions.
First and foremost, thank you for allowing me to talk to the board. My name is Vincent Kearney. I am current budget chair of the Lysander Public Safety, or COES, committee. I just want to read a statement from the state. It says, "New statewide exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers." Generally speaking, new law gives municipalities, school districts, fire districts throughout the state, the option to provide a property tax exemption of up to ten percent to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Any such exemption would be valid only on property used exclusively for residential purposes. If a portion of a volunteer's property is used for other purposes, the exemption would be appropriated accordingly. So, then, in the crux of my conversation, what we're looking to do is have the Balden'sville School District consider the ten percent tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Have you guys been approached on this, or approached on this in the past, or anybody? Any other conversations here? This is the first. So, we struggle as, there's literally a number of volunteer firefighters per the NFA dated, blog dated November tenth, twenty twenty-two, regarding a report from twenty twenty, there were six hundred and seventy-six thousand volunteer firefighters, a decrease of six percent from the previous year, and lowest number of volunteer firefighters reported over the years. There's a number of training requirements, there are unscheduled hours, obviously, the patrons go off all night, demands from the public, dial nine-one-one, they expect people to show up, many, many family sacrifices for us volunteers, the fire service has changed over the years, many, many more alarms. And as, as, as I've been a member of the Balden'sville Fire Department for over thirty years, we're getting older. So, what I'm looking for is the board to consider the ten percent exemption, so it may entice folks to volunteer, you know, use it as a recruitment tool or a retention tool. Any questions for me?
This is not a discussion, so thank you for your comments.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Steve Young in regards to state of the arts.
Good evening. I wasn't going to speak tonight, unfortunately, a couple of the others weren't able to make it, so I don't have anything prepared like last time. However, since I don't have that much to say, just a few things, I'd like to first thank, I can't use names, but I'd like to thank a board member that spoke to me about possibly upgrading the marching band facility. That person knows who they are, I appreciate that. Marching Band does a lot with a little, a very lot with a very little. That being said, back to VTAP. So, we got the numbers in, and as you just heard, prior shows were around the ninety-five percent mark for attendance. Now, we're down at the, you know, eight to seventy-five percent mark. I have the numbers, I'm not going to read them all boring, but the bottom line is, is that in the previous shows, there were tickets that were handed out for free, they were comp tickets. The percentages of those shows where attended were at the ninety-five percent mark, but in those same years, the comp tickets had anywhere from a forty percent participation up to as mu, as only as high as a seventy-five percent participation. So, those numbers of the comp tickets, the tickets that were handed out for free because there's no accountability or there's no ownership of those tickets, those drag the numbers down for the overall participation of the show. So, you can see as a trend over the years, that when you hand things out for free, people don't always treat them like they would have if they had ownership of them. And as you heard, you know, these students, they produce an outstanding product. Any of you that were there to see Finding Mimo, you saw examples of that, and I hope folks to volunteer, use it as a recruitment tool or a retention tool. Any questions for me?
This is not a discussion, so thank you for your comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Steve Young in regards to State of the Arts.
Good evening. I wasn't going to speak tonight, unfortunately, a couple of the others weren't able to make it, so I don't have anything prepared like last time. However, since I don't have that much to say, just a few things. I'd like to first thank, I can't use names, but I'd like to thank a board member that spoke to me about possibly upgrading the Marching Band facility. That person knows who they are. I appreciate that. Marching Band does a lot with a little, a very lot with a very little. That being said, back to VTEP. So we got the numbers in, and as you just heard, prior shows were around the ninety-five percent mark for attendance. Now we're down at the, you know, eight to seventy-five percent mark. I have the numbers, I'm not going to read them all boring. But the bottom line is, is that in the previous shows, there were tickets that were handed out for free. They were comp tickets. The percentages of those shows where attended were at the ninety-five percent mark, but in those same years, the comp tickets had anywhere from a forty percent participation up to as much, only as high as a seventy-five percent participation. So those numbers of the comp tickets, the tickets that were handed out for free because there's no accountability or there's no ownership of those tickets, those drag the numbers down for the overall participation of the show. So you can see as a trend over the years that when you hand things out for free, people don't always treat them like they would have if they had ownership of them. And as you heard, you know, these students, they produce an outstanding product. Any of you that were there to see Finding Mimo, you saw examples of that. And I hope, I encourage you all to come see Matilda, because, you know, the high-school show is, well, they're high-schoolers, right? And they do an amazing job. So reflecting on those numbers, what I would say about that is, we as humans have the power of reflection, right? And since we have made it worse, and for me personally, in the building department, right? It is absolutely miserable. This process was miserable to try to get through this. Absolutely miserable. And with Matilda, there's a lot of things that we need to get, like Truncol's desk, chairs, Wormwood's house, things of that nature. In the past, we would have just gone to Facebook Marketplace and for twenty bucks picked up a chair, fifty bucks picked up the desk. I gotta build that. I had to build a desk, right? Which I can do, I don't have a problem with that, but you're gonna take a number of hours. And if ever you've seen a Matilda play, I'm going to be living there now because of this, right? And to build that desk that we could have got for fifty bucks, it's gonna cost me probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for materials to build that same desk again all my time, which is a lot of time that I spend away from my wife and kids, you know, at nights. So all that being said, I would just like to say that based on the numbers, we knew this was a bad decision going in. Now we've seen the numbers, now we know it was a really bad decision. So, you know, reflecting upon it, I would like to see that effective tomorrow morning, we make the announcement that the high-school ticket sales are back on and that VTEP becomes self-funded again, and we put the power back in the students' hands with the guidance of the directors running the show, the professionals that run that show, and let's get it back in what it was. All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Lou Gekel in regards to Board Processes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lou Gekel. I'm Shelley's wife, and I was brought up here for support as well. I actually have her resignation letter here, and I was gonna read it, and one of the things that I looked at and was taken aback is her paragraph. "In May of twenty-one, I campaigned to provide a greater level of transparency, ask critical questions, and ensure a high level of accountability." I was asked to be here to read her letter in case you wouldn't let her read in public, the members of the board. I believe that you have, all of you have conspired to decrease the level of transparency, do not allow critical questions, and you don't want any accountability whatsoever. And I'm not gonna name names, because I don't know them. I only hear her frustrated, her tears, and the time that she puts in. And I think you should all be ashamed of yourself, because you do not act like adults. You do not want to make this district better, because if you did, you would actually have debates. You wouldn't shut people out and not let them do their job, because just as much as you think you're right, they're right as well. So you might want to think about meeting in the middle and stop playing childish games, because we could elect some teenage boys and girls to do the darn same thing that you folks are doing. Then I'd actually like to address something that I just found out today. I just realized why my football game is free. For DEI? If you people think that a two-dollar football ticket is gonna be DEI, or whatever a ticket to a show is, five bucks, ten bucks, is gonna include people? Wow, you guys are so far off-base, it's unbelievable. And I'm not gonna take anymore, because that was all from the heart. And I also want to thank my wife for doing what she's done. She has been through hell, and I'm glad it's finally over for her. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Laura Leighton in regards to Theaters Program.
Hi, my name's Laura Leighton, and my daughter participated in the Finding Mimo Junior show. I also have a son who participates in athletics. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I apologize if I'm not up to my normal level of speaking, but I do pay for my son to participate in athletics for Baldensville. I fully expected to pay for my daughter's theater tickets, as I have never attended any of her shows without paying for a fee. So as I showed up to the parent meeting, I was shocked to find out that this year a change was made to not allow tickets to be sold for any fee, especially since this funds the program. The theater director makes multiple offers to allow students to have every option available to them to fund if they need a show T-shirt, if they need a ticket for the after-party, or tickets to the show. There is no reason for finances to be a prohibiting factor for participating in a theatrical show here at Beville. These students work very hard, and they deserve a full audience. I understand there's always no shows, but entire rows were empty. I took pictures before each show and have photographic evidence of what happened one minute prior to the showtime of each show. The matinee in particular had lower-level rows completely empty. The student performers noticed. This is a disservice to these students. Multiple people wanted tickets but were unavailable to get tickets for a sold-out show, which, as we've learned here tonight, had twenty percent of people not show up. This includes a teacher at Derby who was looking for tickets as well, and some parents who, kids in the show. Finally, I'm not just a parent of a person in the show, I'm a taxpayer, and I cannot understand why we would take away a fully self-funded program and make it a line item in an already-stretched budget. As my daughter said in the show, I hope we just keep swimming to find a better solution to this problem. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Joe Saracini in regards to naming policy change.
Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. Before I go into my speech here, basically, I wanted to congratulate all the student athletes that excelled this fall. It was exciting to see that, and also congratulations to the faculty and their accolades. And my name's Joe Saracini. I'm a lifelong resident of Baldensville. I was a ninety graduate, seems like yesterday, whipping by. I'm actually here on behalf of my brother, Anthony Saracini, who spoke passionately about this topic. We're both active in the community, Baldenville, Kualanis, and I've served publicly as well. So I want to thank you all for your service. The purpose for me being here today is to thank you on behalf of the Baldensville community for listening and taking the necessary steps in changing an existing naming policy to allow future administration and staff to be honored and remembered for going above and beyond. Joining the ranks of Charles W. Baker, Pearl Palmer, Perry Eldon, Catherine McNamara, Donald S. Ray, May Reynolds, John Nostrand, who happened to be my grandfather, there's a wing named after him in Dirkie, James Peltier, John R. Carroll, and others. This change in policy will support a strong initiative with significant support throughout the community in naming the new athletic facility, C.W. Baker, not Leo Johnson. Folks such as Leo and others mentioned earlier went above and beyond, leaving a legacy in their wake. These individuals laid the foundation for Baldensville School District to become what it is today. Leo Johnson was a huge influence as a coach, but it also extended far beyond the wrestling match. His unwavering commitment to excellence inspired generations of athletes to push the limits and strive for greatness, both on and off the field. Under his guidance, numerous athletes won state championships, earning recognition not only for themselves, but also for our beloved school district in town. As an athletic director, Leo played the instrumental role of fostering a culture of sportsmanship and teamwork within our community. He tirelessly worked towards providing opportunities for young athletes to develop their skills while instilling values such as discipline, dedication, and respect. Through his leadership, he helped shape well-rounded individuals who excelled not just athletically, but also academically. I personally witnessed how Leo's coaching had transformed the lives of athletes in our community. His dedication, passion, unwavering support made elastic impact on many lives and athletic careers, personal growth. And it's time for us to come together as a community to show the gratitude by naming the new athletic center after his exceptional, after this exceptional administrator, coach, and basically, he's a legend. You mentioned Leo Johnson. Me and I hung up in Edwards, New York. Big wrestling community up there. You mentioned Leo Johnson. I mean, anybody in the wrestling world knows him. He's a great guy. As a side note to this, we have significant financial support that's been pledged to take care of any expenses associated with the naming of the new facility.
So thank you, I appreciate it. And that is the change, changing of policies on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Ken, do we have any other speakers?
No, we do not.
Okay. So I appreciate the comments, and also, we are discussing the VTEP program under roundtable later tonight also, because we want to get it right, but it does take some discussion. We have some additional financial facts that the gentleman, the administrator, gathered for us.
All right.
So thank you.
And thank you again for your service.
Okay, moving on. We are down to the business section, so we're ready for the consent agenda. Resolve the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. So Lou, Don?
Hello, please.
All right, Lou, thank you. Any questions or discussions on the consent agenda?
I just had a quick question. I just wanted to make sure I was reading the special education report correctly. So there's, on the cover of the special education report, there are eleven initial eligibility meetings and then eight ineligible. Am I reading this correctly, that out of the eleven, eight were determined to be ineligible, or is that another denominator?
Nope, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay. All right, and then five declassified, that's just from, that's not part of the eleven. That's, that would be more. Okay, that's, okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And eight, a. We have the policies of first reading of the six-hundred series, so those are on for first reading tonight, meaning they will be up for vote at the next meeting. Any comments there?
Just one real quick comment. So this is, this was approved earlier in the evening, recommended by the Policy Committee. It is based on the Workplace Violence Prevention Act that has been in place for quite some time for most employers in New York State. Schools were exempt because of Project Save. There was a change recently in legislation, governor's action, that puts this in place for schools effective January fourth. So we have it on for a first reading this evening, and our next meeting is on January eighth for final approval for this policy. There is a thirty-day window. Once this goes into effect on January fourth, there's thirty days that schools have to be compliant. I believe we are ahead of the game compared to other districts from where, you know, information we receive from legal. So certainly, this is important. If there's no objections, we would move this forward on January fourth.
I just wanted to make a mutation. There's actually a misspelling in the second paragraph.
We got those at the Policy Committee meeting today.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going.
No, 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 thank you. We did make the change. There were two, when it transferred over, because this is the policy that was recommended from the state, transferred from PDAC to Word. There was a few. We got it. Thank you.
Okay, so we're okay with that, and we are ready to move on to item C, and that is resolve the Board of Education approved the Baldensville Central School District Policy Series Two Thousand, Policy Series, Policy Twenty-three Sixty, updating, updated pursuant to the attached. Lou?
Um.
Thank you.
Second.
Don? Okay, any discussion? This is the policy that will allow, the change will allow naming of buildings or parts of buildings at this point. What rest of our?
I think we need to go back into the evening.
Oh, I apologize. Let's do, since the motion's on for people, we'll do, we'll do C, and then we'll go back to B. So if there's questions on C or discussion? Okay, so that motion's on the table. All in, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion's carried, and my apologies, yes. The resolved, so the eight, B, resolve that the Board of Education approved the Baldensville Central School District Policy Series Six Thousand, review, retire, update pursuant to the attached. So, Andrew?
Second.
Wayne? Okay, any discussion there that was, obviously been discussed before, but any questions? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, looks like motion carried. Thank you for that, guys. And now, we're down to D, which is a donation to Palmer. We'll get the motion on the table, and then I'm sure Joe has something to say. Resolve the Board of Education accept the donation of Palmer Elementary School, Palm and Lane, now, Jennifer Bacon and Marianne Floppenberg in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars to give sense in memory of their daughters and nieces, Mariella and Elizabeth, to be used for library furniture.
Both.
Shelley? Sam? Okay, motion's on the table. Joe?
So I just, I just wanted to thank town, I see town's here, I don't see Louie, and the rest of the family. On behalf of the district, we can't thank you enough for this donation. I know there are a lot of students at Palmer Elementary School who are going to enjoy utilizing the furniture that you're providing the district, and certainly know that moving forward, this will continue to keep Mariella and Elizabeth's memory alive for years to come. So on behalf of the district, we can't thank you enough. And once they officially approve this donation, I'm gonna ask you to come forward with Mr. Yu and the principal, and the rest of the board for that matter, and you'd like to grab a photograph of your generous contribution. Thank you.
Okay, motion's on the table. Questions? Okay, let's proceed to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Can you actually go over between?
Yes. Okay, right. Could you?
Good. Everyone look ready? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. But we're, we're, oh, Chris, is where are the non-직원 at the high school, you know?
We're still working through that. Once they arrive, we'll let you know for sure in the staff's photographs, and I'll get it out there in the weekly letter, and then the, I.
I've matured.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kevin, for all the love, work, and making that happen.
Okay. Well, I think E, excuse me, that was E. Resolve the Board of Education approve the new force proposals for Baker High School Social Studies ELA and CTE, technology departments pursuant to be attached. Andrew?
Second?
Wayne? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So, that's pretty neat, and thank you, Mr. Perler. I'm sure you have part in that. But we're, we're, oh, Chris, is where are the non-직원 at the high school, you know?
We're still working through that. Once they arrive, we'll let you know for sure in the staff's photographs, and I'll get it out there in the weekly letter, and then the, I.
I've matured.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kevin, for all the love, work, and making that happen.
Okay. Well, I think E, excuse me, that was E. Resolve the Board of Education approve the new force proposals for Baker High School Social Studies ELA and CTE, technology departments pursuant to be attached. Andrew?
Second?
Wayne? Questions or discussions on these? I think we're ready to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So, I do think this is, this is, this is great, and I don't know, Renee, is this in your jurisdiction? So, it's nice to see us doing some rather cutting-edge curriculum. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, then, G, this is a simple approval of the tax information we have, as I understand it. Is that Brett Kimberley? Okay, resolve Board of Education accept the affidavit, letter, and unpaid property tax report, fast presented. So, Andrew?
Second?
Lou? Any questions on that? Okay, then, move to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the board roundtable, and the first item is the musical production. So, we'd ask for some additional information, and I have some, so thank you.
So, first, I know the board, we provided information to you in the November 9th, and then the most recent Friday communication or weekly letter with information about the ticket sales. I know some of the members in the audience identified the sale numbers. One thing that I think's important to point out moving forward, when you look at the overall number of tickets that were sold over the last couple of years, that tells a slightly different story, one that, you know, we're proud of. Back in the 2021 year when we had the show Moana Jr., the number of tickets sold at that point in time, overall, there were 1,094 tickets sold over the course of three shows. In 2022, for the production of the Disney's Lion King Jr., there were a total of 1,632 redeemed tickets. And then this year, with the, the show Finding Nemo, there were 1,626 tickets. So, in total, pretty comparable to the Lion King, six less tickets redeemed this year. One of the things when we asked for additional information from the fine art staff that we learned over the course of this review, was that there were also, we had 697 tickets that were sold, and that's when we were communicating that there were no seats left available. And that auditorium seats close to over 800 seats. So, we started asking additional questions. Why were we not, why were we communicating that the tickets were sold out and there were still seats available? And come to find out that we had learned that there was some restrictions that were put on, those front seats that were identified by members of the audience. And so, that is something that's being addressed, obviously, moving forward for the production of our spring musical. Those will be available. One of the things that we also learned was that families, and I was a prime example of this, when I went to, you know, reserve my tickets, I did not have the ability to actually select the seats like I had in previous shows. And so, we were allowed to identify region of the auditorium or the theater, and so, that will be corrected for the spring musical. So, in all, we look at the number of tickets that were redeemed in comparison to previous years were consistent. So, the number of students empty seats is consistent to the previous shows. We're hopeful that moving forward, as we open up more seats in the auditorium, and there were a few issues that members of our community mentioned regarding the sound, sound with some of the portable mics. We are looking at additional headsets for the students. My understanding from having our folks talk to the musical directors and the staff is that there weren't enough of the portable headsets. And so, one of the things when you're changing those headsets back and forth, in between sets are, it, the wear and tear on those. So, we're looking at some additional purchases so that students have their own set while they're there, if they're one of the leads, or just have a more singular vocal part as opposed to the ensemble. I think it's also interesting that, you know, when we pulled additional information, we found that there were 283 tickets that were reserved by either family members of cast that didn't redeem their tickets, or staff members of our school district. And so, we're certainly asking more questions. You know, when you look at our district mission and vision and our core actions and beliefs, we're announcing this Friday in our school communication to our families that we are now qualifying for free meals for all students, given the changes in the food service requirements from the federal government. So, we do have, certainly have a changing population indeed is greater, and we're being consistent to what we have done with our athletics, our marching band, our instrument purchases at the younger levels. So, I certainly, you know, continue to stand by what we approved last year as a district moving forward in the budget development process, where we identified we were not going to charge for student events, but certainly would be happy to answer any additional questions the board may have. Kim can talk a little bit more about the specifics with BTAP and how that falls under the student, the student requirements for student fundraising, and what's considered appropriate within the stipulations of extra class activity accounts, if there are specific questions the board has. But I think I tried to give you as much as I could in the Friday letter, but I would open it up. Any further comments or questions?
On the order? Right, okay. May I ask you? I understand what the community is looking to and developing, share just out now. Is there a way that next year, this can be reviewed? It sounds like at the last, I don't say last minute, but perhaps not. All parties were on board or understanding, I don't know, but could it be reviewed after the spring production? Because to a lot of points that community members and students shared out tonight, it is about the students, and to look out at an audience that is not full, we really need to do a better job in communicating that. So, I'm hoping that maybe it'll be up for review.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, after every situation, we reassess and review, and that's why we ask those more detailed questions of the staff to get answers to why there were some seats available. I will say as well that this process, I mean, it has been a two-year process, and we have been working with the fine and performing arts staff, both from marching band, right straight through to the musical staff. We started this process about two years ago as a part of our instructional budget presentations with union leadership and our teachers and committees back two years ago. And, you know, we've had conversations in December of last year where the final decision was made that we were moving in this direction. And part of that, too, is that we were able to get additional aid from posies through arts and ed, which allows us basically, we get a return of 75 cents, approximately 75 cents on every dollar for funding that goes toward these types of productions. So, we were already spending a lot on, or some funding on the rights so that we could get the reimbursement for our students. So, again, that's just one more piece of information that helps justify where we are and why we went with the decision last school year in the spring when we were working through the budget and development process.
So, other questions? From my understanding, were these productions ever self-sufficient, or did the school always put money into the productions?
There are certain positions that the school district was always putting money in for, and then in addition to that, there is specific guidance in regards to what extra class programs you're supposed to be doing and how they're supposed to be ran. So, we go through and do a training every fall with all of the extra class advisors, and when you start looking at what that really means, it's supposed to be a student functioning club where you have certain advisors. Actions are being taken, the students are making the decisions, the students are counting the money. The students are really the ones that own the club and all of the actions that are happening. So, we've been working very closely with all the advisors to make sure that the students are literally the ones that are counting the money, that are filling out the forms and the paperwork, and working directly with the club advisor who's overseeing and not doing the work for them. So, this is one of those things that every school district continues to strive to get better at. It's a unique situation because the extra class accounts are technically not district funds. However, they are subject to the audit by the county comptroller's office, and when they come in to audit them and/or when our external auditors are auditing them, we're the ones that get the results, the boards are accepting the results, and we're the ones that are responsible for doing the corrective action.
Yes, I understand that. So, so, and from what I understand, Chris, how many funds were put into the budget for this, this year than last year?
Yeah, so, when you look overall, and I think the directors would attest to this as well, the funding that was allocated for the show was greater than what was provided in previous shows, and certainly, there is some funding remaining in the BTAP EC accounts, which can be used as the students choose whether they're purchasing some of the things that were mentioned, t-shirts and all of those items.
And in terms of funds, there's like over, the number I saw was over $22,000 in the BTAP account. Is that right?
Top sales.
So, there's enough for chairs and stuff like that, desks and whatever.
Yes, they definitely still funding, and we have met with the club advisors through the processes, and fundraising is still allowed. So, we're not saying that they can't fundraise. There is kind of two different topics. It's just not fundraising for ticket sales is the major change. And the district has been working extensively with the advisors because it is a shift. Everything has to go through the business office now, it all goes through general fund. So, we have to make sure that we follow all the purchasing guidelines that we have in place in the school district.
So, to the point that they, if they need to purchase something through the business office, it does take a lot of extra steps. You gotta get a PO, you gotta have a approval, I guess, right?
We always follow our purchasing processes, but we also do have district credit cards. So, you know, we're going to have a PO put in ahead of time for purchases, and then they stop and get a credit card, they go shop, and then bring us back the receipt. But if you can't get the credit card, then you can't get the show.
So, so, is there any other questions or information? Because I'm sure this is going to be an ongoing discussion, so I would urge people in the audience, this is not a public discussion, but I would urge you to send emails to communicate with us additional questions so that we can understand. I don't know that we could make a change quickly, but we want to see that the right, best process for students are followed going forward, right? So, okay. Any other? Don?
Yeah, two things on my mind. One is, I don't, I don't know anything about BTAP funding, and I'm wondering what the district's input from a financial perspective, what would the district input is compared to what we definitely has been under, sort of their self-funding model, and what's the, is there an act there? Is there a difference?
So, just in general, when we, Kim might be able to talk a little more specifically, but when we, in general, when we're going through the budget development process, part of the conversation, again, which began when the decision was made last year in December, we asked the directors how much they were anticipating needing to spend based on their experience for future shows, so they're going to go through the budget, which it was. And then, again, we're getting that AIPAC every year after. So, that those, they've gotten what they needed, that exact dollar amount. I have to, I don't know if Kim, you know it off the top of your head. We didn't provide that for the board, but my understanding is, you know, again, they haven't lost anything as far as funding, they've actually been.
Yeah, the only other thing about it is, I want to echo something that Victor just said there. I do want to hear an awful lot more about this because the flow, you know, the way, the way that money flows is, is sometimes mysterious, and I'd like to, I'd like to peel some of the layers back on this a little bit. I have a viscerally positive reaction to the argument that we took something that was being privately funded and we made it public. Now, I don't know, that's an easy thing to say out loud, you know, it's private, not public, it's taxpayer, and I am all about protecting taxpayers, in my record and in other places, and you'll see that very, very clearly. So, this is, this is of interest to me, and I would, I'd like to get, I'd like to see those emails, phone calls, and anyone else around there. Okay. Sam?
I just have a quick question about the funding balances of the funds. Is there a limit? I know they're audited, but is there a limit that each fund can have, or does, do they just carry it over from year to year?
They carry it over from year to year, so they're fundraising periodically, and then those funds just shift from, as of June 30th to July 1st. So, if you see on the grid, it kind of goes, and they stay in line from June 30th to the beginning of August on July 1st. And that's just the net, if that's not checking time. We do provide quarterly reports to the Board of Education and to all of our extra class accounts, and they're really kind of ups and flows. I mean, we may have a club that has $10 in their account, or we may have a club that has hundreds of dollars. And if you think about the purpose of the clubs and being student-driven, it's based on what the students decide they want to do. So, they may fundraise for two or three years for some large trip that they want to do, or some large function that they want to do. So, every, they have the ability to do all of that as long as they're following the processes and procedures that are outlined in the circular links that's provided and so, everything really goes out of it. And making sure that they're documenting all those actions in reference to the students actually making the decision. So, it's right down to the fact that if the students want to make a donation to somebody, that needs to be voted on and be in three minutes, just like what's that, and then our planning director reviews all of the ins and outs of the stuff, and speaking of these same specifications, and then we're actually going to go through what's coming in, for what Mr. Treasure does to the residents, and that, and that, and that process. So, really, the whole purpose of the extra classes really to allow students to learn what it's like to be a part of a public organization, such as we are at larger scale, so that they understand all of the things that have to happen in regards to documentation, follow-up, and all of those things that happen. and follow-up and all of those things that have to transpire.
As long as question, are there other districts that are doing this same thing? Where there's self-funding programs by students that are being now funded by the Arts Meds funding?
Yeah, actually, that's one of the things that kind of spearheaded this. Arts Med is, you know, a service through BOCES that many districts use. And when we actually started looking into this, we learned about other neighboring districts that actually built their program from being funded even less than ours previously was to funding, you know, in six-digit numbers by creating that constant revenue stream. So, you know, some of our people last year were more active and involved in making switches quickly in the spring. So what we did was we increased their budget line because we knew we were going to have the revenue coming back in from the BOCES data on the other side to support that. So as we are tracking this, as their spending were, we were able to make those shifts because we have the revenue coming back in to support it. To, you know, to the bourbon's point, for every dollar spent by doing it this way, it's really 25 cents for the local taxpayer versus a full dollar. Or a full dollar of fundraising, which is really probably coming from our tax base and/or our community as well. But we can definitely provide, you know, additional information about that. But yes, this is a model that many school districts use to promote and promote.
I'm sorry, just one last question. So when the funds are given back at the 75% rate the following year, are those funds equally distributed amongst the programs from the year prior? Or how does that work for budgeting purposes for different programs? And I'm only asking because I want to make sure that if that program is in need of a certain dollar amount, that they will be able to have access to that dollar.
So it's a revenue that comes into the district in just the general fund through BOCES A. But you'll see in the budgets that are, like, for example, the budget that's going to be proposed as we move forward through this process. This year you'll see the funding that supports the additional change in increase. So that changes from year to year. But it's in the instructional budget presentation that you'll see the adjustment. So it doesn't go back specifically into their account, but we're at a point right now where we're not reducing any portion of one of the budgets for materials and supplies, contractual salaries, that if anything, we've actually added. You know, this year alone, we've added drama production in our district, thankfully with the board's support. So that's one other way that we're allowed, we're able to utilize some of this funding stream that's coming back to the district to put back in for student programming to expand the fine performing arts program. And that hasn't been in place for very long.
I just have one last question. So the, the, you know, high school students spoke, said, talked a little bit about the experience the students have with managing money and that kind of thing. So am I understanding correctly that they'll still have an account? It'll be, they'll be fundraising, they'll still have an account and will still be able to learn those valuable lessons with that account?
It's how they choose to utilize that funding. The students can make that choice. If they want to use their funding from fundraising to get extra things that they want for the collections, they have the ability to do that. But the way that it's been funded this year, the core cost of running a production, the directors provided us that information, we built that into a budget for the pre-24 school year.
I have one more question, if I'm knowing, or the people who have spoken there. Is there, so I, I, I don't know all the matching state A or BOCES A or, you know, all the matching, all that. Like I said, sometimes in a, in a public budget, money is mysteriously and somehow, you know, it either appears or doesn't. I'm wondering if it's, if it's possible for, and I'm not proposing anything, I'm just sort of spitballing, just thinking out loud. Is it possible for us to create an mechanism where there is a line of budget that's funded for this program that can be, can be displaced by monies that are raised through ticket sales? In other words, we budget easy numbers. We budget $10,000 and ticket sales for a show are raised $5,000. Can, can that, the monies that are privately raised be used to, to displace the money in the budget?
I don't know if I'm looking at Kim, I don't know if I understand the question correctly. I know we can't double dip, basically, is the way I'm interpreting it. You know, once we've allocated, you know, we can't, we can't replace. But I'm going to look at Kim for some assistance with that.
So I don't think it's, none of our budgeting processes are as simple as that just sounded.
Understood.
Let me start there.
Just spitballing.
However, you know, I will follow it up with, you know, I think we've run ourselves in this district to figure out a way to make anything happen that we are charged to do in addition to this switch that we just made right now. We've made a number of changes, always doing what's best for students and what's right for students. It's not, it's typically, it's not, it's a one-for-one. But we can always accept donations, but it's in the best interest of our students and our communities. I can give you an example. You know, if it's, you know, heartbeat or reading and the PTA is trying to make a purchase and we try to help them extend their dollars, if they give us a donation for the amount of money we're spending and we can get a better deal on something. We can then purchase it out of our budget, which is, I think, is about as similar to what you were explaining, is I can give you an example for. So there's, there's always ways to try to do what's in the best interest for everybody and stretch dollars as far as we possibly can, which is why we're, you know, in the position that we are in the district right now.
Let's, you start there.
Okay, so.
I have, um, just, you know, we need to hold from one student. I saw who wants to represent all students from everything. It is a discussion that will come on again, missing in another meeting. I, if, if it like, if just a war of the money as well, I could reach out to possibly the students who are participating in the play to get their perspective as well. Because it's, everyone's working together to make these productions happen. So to, to understand the students' point of view and how they may see this, I'll water swipe so we can understand like how, how students are feeling about this. I have no problem reaching out to them and trying to set up something where I can gain information on how all the students are feeling. And we're brought back to you guys because it was important to hear from one student, but it's also important to hear from all of them. And not all students, it's very brave to come up here and speak and it takes, you know, not, hey, it is, it's very, it's brave, you know, sometimes it's very, it's not all students, a lot to come up and speak like that. So to make it easier for all students to have their voices heard and their opinions on this topic, I can reach out as student board members to their, abroad.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. And also to be interested in, if the experience with the ECA funds, what kind of experience they have in monitoring and spending those funds too.
Yeah, and I can, I can share with you at the next meeting when it is discussed again. And, you know, with, you know, with time, I, I of course have to reach out by the time. That may take time as well, but it's important that it happens and something that I will also push more so that we can understand what the students are feeling and students who may not be able to make the voice of the meetings or be able to leave those positions to speak up, you know, do it for them.
Okay, so the other item on here is Robert's Rule of Order. And I think we might have had some confusion because our policy, initial policy did not, what we adopted of, didn't cover Robert's Rules. It should have covered Robert's Rules, but we've always expected, I think, to run by Robert's Rules. So are you any of the thoughts on that? That's an expectation of the board, I believe. If you have some knowledge and we will try to proceed under Robert's Rules.
Just to be clear, in reference to Robert's Rules, or how this meeting is functioning is, is directly because of Robert's Rule? I think that the issue that has often come up in our conversation is how we engage in dialogue about various topics. And I think more recently, we have witnessed, as has been noticed by community members, that some dialogue, some discussion is not welcomed. So I think as we move forward and to Shelley's point and your statement, I think if you're going to apply Robert's Rule and if you look at some of the additions, the size of our board doesn't necessarily warrant some of the parliamentary procedures that typically you see in larger assemblies, as you have experienced in your role at the state government. I think grounding ourselves in the future and for future board members to ground themselves on what it means to, you know, be able to speak and to be able to do that unconditionally and uninterrupted, as was demonstrated by us the year in this discussion regarding the BTAAP. So I, I think it's just a matter of just practice. I think if you start getting into these things of motions and seconding motions, then we're going to sort of, in my opinion, violate the purpose of Robert's Rules was put into place to encourage democratic dialogue amongst us. So just put that in, in the space.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I guess we'll move on then. I think that pretty much concludes our business portion. So we're off, the Board of Education entered into executive session, discuss the employment history of a particular person. Don?
Second.
Tanya? Those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We take a five-minute recess, voting in seven. Thank you, everyone.